Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know it says 6:59 up here, but by the computer it's 7 o'clock. So before I call the meeting to order, I just wanted to mention that we think possibly some of you are here this evening based on some calls that have been made to the Planning Office to address the ongoing rewrite of our zoning regulations in the process. We certainly want to try to answer any questions you have, and the only opportunity for you to comment tonight is under Public Comment, and I'll let you know where that is on the agenda. Unfortunately, under that portion of the comment, we can't have a two-way dialogue with anybody. So you could ask us a question, and we'll listen very intently, and we'll keep a record of what you say, but we can't have a dialogue. And that's just Robert's rules and how the agenda is laid out. I do want to encourage you to attend the next meeting of the Rewrite Committee, which is on June 26 at 6:00 p.m. Clifton can provide you with the link to connect. The meeting agenda and call-in information will be posted on the town's website. If you haven't joined a Zoom meeting, and I realize most of you have, but if you haven't, we can provide you with some assistance on how to connect. But I want to strongly encourage you to participate. The more comment, the more input, the more dialogue we have on this, as I said, tonight can only be a one-way dialogue, the better result we're going to have in this rewrite process. Commission has held many meetings. We've had, I would say, fair participation, and we've done some creative things with workshops, some creative things with Zoom meetings. Frankly, I think the participation could be better despite our efforts. So I certainly don't want to do anything tonight to discourage you from participating. Quite to the contrary, I want to encourage you to participate. So please feel free to reach out to Clifton. He can give you more information on June 26. And as I've said, we're interested to hear what you have to say. We'll make a record of what you have to say. You really can't engage in any dialogue tonight. I'm glad you're here. So with that, I'll call the June 18 regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'm Chuck Sheen. I'm the chairman. My thanks to all the commissioners who faithfully show up to these meetings, and there have been a lot of them with the Zoning Rewrite Committee. Appreciate your faithful commitment and attendance to these sessions. I'll get into appointment of alternates as we work our way through the agenda because it's going to be different alternates for different items. With that, we're on item three, minutes of the meeting. What's the commission's pleasure on the June 6 meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1760 from June 6, 2024, as written and submitted.
Motion approved by Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned that you, the minutes state that you read the minutes concerning, I think it might have been St. Edmunds?
Yeah.
But actually, I think you actually meant to say that you watched the video, the whole tape of that public hearing that you missed. So it wasn't the minutes, which is great, but it's watching the whole video that counts, correct?
Correct.
That was the only thing I found wrong.
Thank you. So if that could be amended?
Yes.
With that one note, what's the commission's pleasure on the meeting minutes?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The chair votes aye. Meeting 1761, June 12.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1761 from June 12, 2024, as written and submitted.
Motion approved by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. A second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve?
I abstain. I was not present at the meeting.
You're abstaining, Ryan?
Yes, I was not present at that meeting.
Okay. One abstention, chair votes aye, the motion passes. Now we come to public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens who want to address the commission to identify yourself and speak freely. As I said earlier, under this item, we can't have a two-way dialogue. So it's not that you're not heard because we don't respond, it's just that that's the process of the meeting. Anyone wish to speak under public comment? Hearing none will move to item five, correspondence. Clifton?
So with the change of the Stonington Middle School now moving into this building, we've been officially kicked out starting in August. So what's been provided in your packets and what's going to be posted on the town clerk's office is the revised meeting schedule. Our regular meetings will now be held at the police station community room.
Does this become official just by the posting, or does it require a vote?
It becomes official by the posting.
So it's posted with the Secretary of State and also with the town clerk, correct?
Correct. It's being posted with the town clerk, and we're meeting the requirements from the state.
Thank you. So everyone adjust your calendars accordingly. Any other comments on that? Any questions for Clifton? Hearing none will move to reports from staff. Nothing from staff. I have nothing as the chair. You'll note in your packets, we had the zoning enforcement officers' report for May of 2024. Any questions on any of the items currently under review by the zoning enforcement officer? Hearing none, we come to administrative review. Is there anyone here to represent item T-2419, permit?
I'm here. Clay Burkhalter with one of the owners.
If you could step forward, please identify yourself and state your name for the record.
My name's Clay Burkhalter, and I'm co-own Hero Holdings, where this tent is located with my wife, Glenna.
Okay. Just explain your proposal for the audience and for the commission.
It's a 10-by-20 seasonal tent that's put up in an area, dog yard area, for some protection for dogs and their trainers. And it will be up from, basically from June 1 through October 31st.
Is this an annual thing that you do, that you've done before?
No, this is the first time. Last year, we had up just a small umbrella.
Okay.
And it provided a little bit of protection, but we've gone to this because there might be five or six dogs and two people in the yard at one time.
If the next few days, if the next few days are any example of what we're in store for, it'll be well utilized.
Oh, yeah, it already is.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Ben?
Hi, Mr. Clay, how are you? Where exactly is the tent going? I didn't see on the site plan.
It, I thought I had it sketched on there, but...
Oh, am I on the wrong sheet? Can you just physically describe where it's going?
It's in a...
Oh, no, shade tent. Is it over here?
Oh, we were there.
At the top left corner.
So that's the opposite side of the dog, aren't the dogs' stuff on the other side of the building?
It's on the same, there's a room for dog training in the front of the building.
Ah.
And then on the, the big parking lot side, or on the west side of the building is a dog yard, and it's in there. So it's the opposite side of the building from the daycare.
Okay. Great, thank you. Looks like, and it's already fenced in?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. That's all.
What's that? Anyone else have any questions to this applicant? Hearing none. I guess at this point, we vote on this item, correct? So we should appoint an alternate. Point Mary Ellen to be seated for this? So you'll be voting, Mary Ellen? All in favor of, I'm sorry, a motion on item T-2419?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application submitted, T-2419, as written and submitted.
I don't believe there were any recommended conditions on this application.
No.
Okay, so thank you, Ryan. A motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chair votes aye. Okay, under all business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Under all business, next item on the agenda is St. Edmunds of Connecticut, and I see the applicant is here and present. What's the commission's pleasure on the application of St. Edmunds for the site application approval, site plan approval, and coastal area management review permits? For this, I'm sorry, Ben, you attended all the meetings on this, so you'll be appointed, and you'll be acting on this.
My understanding was Bennett was the last person to be seated as an alternate.
Uh huh.
But we will go along with whatever you recommend.
Okay, so two people have to be appointed?
Ah.
So you'll...
Okay.
So Bennett will be appointed as well. I'm sorry, Bennett. Thank you. So the both of you will be seated for this item.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Clifton. So we need two separate motions, one for the site plan and one for the CAM, correct?
No, you can make it in one.
Oh, make it in one.
Right.
Okay. And then read the stipulations in as well.
Could read the stipulations and just ask if there were any, before you do that, ask if there are any questions on the staff report.
Okay. Actually, are there any questions on the staff report?
That's what I'm asking you.
Oh, okay, no. Does anybody else have any questions on the staff report here for this application?
I'm sorry?
Does anyone else have any questions on the staff report before we make a motion?
I'm sorry. Anyone else with questions on the staff report? No. Has everybody looked at the Town Engineers' Report? I believe that has come in since the last meeting as well. Okay. With that in mind, what's your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve both the site plan application and the coastal area management application for this with the following stipulations, following five stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall provide town staff with a complete and final set of application materials incorporating all revisions and responses to comments of satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number two, prior to the development of final plans for sitting or the issuance of any permits or approvals, the applicant shall address any outstanding concerns or deficiencies identified by town staff in review of the final application materials. Number three, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number four, final plans shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. And number five, the application, applicant, pardon me, shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revocable letter of credit meeting the requirements of ZR 15.4.3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
I'd like to recommend one additional condition, and Clifton, if you concur with this. Where this applicant has run awry of past permits, and I think several different ways, and it may only be perception, but that they actually perform more work than they have approval for. There's been points made at these meetings that parking lots are bigger than they were approved, that buildings aren't in the places, that things are cited differently than the plans. I think the applicant, in this case, has prepared a very detailed set of plans, and I commend them for that. A lot of detail that hasn't been in prior plans. But what I'd like to add as an additional condition is that an as-built plan be filed when this is done. And I think that's really as much for the protection of the applicant as it is for the town. When surveys are as complete as they are, an as-built plan is a small detail and not an expensive detail. So I don't think we're putting the applicant to a huge expense here. And I think it's one that will pay dividends for them in the future because they'll have a certification that what they built was what they had approval for. So I'd like to add that, if I could, as a sixth condition. You good with that, Ryan?
Yes, I'm good with that. We'll add that.
Motion's been made by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Sixth condition is added. Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Opposed. The chair votes aye. The motion passes. Okay. We now move into public hearings. And that was for both items, right? The CAM and the site? Okay, fine. Moving on to public hearings. CAM Generation 4 LLC Special Use Permit Application and Coastal Area Management Review. For this, we're going to have Mary Ellen and Bennett. Clifton? Mary Ellen and Bennett will be seated for this. Evening, sir. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, commission. Thank you for having me. My name is Seamus. My name, my name is Seamus Moran, professional engineer in Connecticut. I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates, and I'm the civil engineer representing the applicant. Today is going to be slightly different, or at least I would request that it's slightly different, because we are before a couple other commissions. We went before Planning, I'm sorry, the Police Commission, and received unanimous approval referral, as well as the Architectural Design Review. We had two meetings with them. They unanimously voted to, for a positive referral as well. We had two meetings with, I'm sorry, one meeting with the Wetlands Commission, as well as a site walk with the Wetlands Commission. However, they had some additional comments and questions that I couldn't address at the last meeting, so we have to bring our other subs into the meeting, into the next meeting. And as you know from the process, this commission can't render a decision until Wetlands has rendered a decision. So my request today would be that we hold off on our formal presentation today. Well, I guess I should say, open the public hearing because we notified and sent out the abutter. Yeah, and so by statute, we have to open the public hearing, but I would request that we hold on our formal presentation until after Wetlands has rendered a decision. I do have the plans here, though, if anybody on the commission is familiar with the application or anybody from the public is familiar or wants to get familiar with it and has any questions, comments, concerns, that we could hear and then address during our formal presentation.
So you're requesting that we open the public hearing table about it?
Yes, essentially.
Do you think you'd be ready by our next, well, Wetlands is scheduled to vote prior to our next meeting?
Well, we hope to schedule the vote. We have the subs, the consultants who, they were to address those comments, will be at the next meeting. So we presume that we will have a decision at the next meeting. Obviously, I can't predict that.
So we'll open the public hearing and table the matter?
Yes, unless, and yes, and table it. However, if anybody on the commission has comments that they already know they want to ask, that way we can address it at the next meeting and make sure that we address it at the next meeting.
Normally, questions by the commission follow your presentation. I don't think I want to stray from that, unless the commission has preference to ask questions this evening. So, thank you, and that'll require a motion. You may want to stand right where you are, in case a motion fails.
Let's hope not.
What is the commission's pleasure on opening the public hearing, which I guess we've already opened, and tabling the matter?
I think, Mr. Chairman, just to be for the record, I make a motion to open the public hearing officially for the commission to vote on.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chair votes aye.
And now, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, what's the word? Suspend the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing, sorry. Until the next scheduled meeting of the commission.
Motion made to table till our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Clifton, do we have something we could read before we open the next public hearing? A legal ad?
I don't think it's in Ryan's packet, but we've typically read something where you legally don't have to. You can just make the motion.
So is there a motion to open the next matter, Waterford 2 LLC and Redco Stonington 3?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing for PZ 2412ZZRCP Waterford 2 LLC and Redco Stonington 3 LLC Jay Browning.
Motion made to open the hearing. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you both. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion open?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, who's seated?
I was just going to say that. Mary Ellen has disqualified herself from this matter and will not take part in it. So for the next two items, it will be Bennett and yourself.
Counselor? Mr. Chair, just before, the applicant has requested that the public hearings for this application and the next one be, or the public hearings be completed for both at the same time because it's the same application file.
Does that require a motion?
So you would need to make a motion on the second application to also open that public hearing.
Okay, I can do that.
If you so choose, to not silo it.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I also make a motion to open the public hearing for PZ 2413 SPA plus GPP RCP Waterford 2 LLC and Redco Stonington 3 LLC Jay Browning.
So a motion has been made to combine the public hearings for these two matters. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made by Ryan, seconded by Gary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No one opposed? We're hearing both items. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was actually going to be my first order of business, so thank you, Clifton. For the record, my name is John Casey. I'm a partner with the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole. We represent the applicants in the hearings tonight. We are before you again. As you know, we were here, this is the theater property on Liberty Street and Volantown Road. We were here to obtain a master plan approval under the Neighborhood Design District Regulations. We are here tonight with two new matters. One is to expand the master plan and change some of its elements, and also to obtain Phase 1 site approval for a portion of the site that was approved with the first NDD approval back in February. So I'll begin, as I did the last time, by introducing our development team. We have Michael Leach from RCP Waterford and Reedco Stonington. I think Mike's somewhere. With me is Jeremy Browning from Trio Properties, the developer. Jeffrey Fitzgerald from Bowler Engineering. Roz Chifalelli, our architect from Allies Architecture. Wayne Violet, a landscape architect from Bowler Engineering. Ethan Shikoski, our traffic engineer from Atlantic Traffic and Design. We don't have with us but Donald Pollan from Gorman &amp; York, wrote the municipal impact analysis. And our partner from Ocean Community YMCA is not here tonight either, but you've already heard about that. So I'll quickly summarize the changes. I'll first note for the record that the receipts for the notices have been submitted for the record in our part of the file. We got that approval or notice from the staff. So the summary of the proposed changes to the NDD. And what I'll do, and we were lucky enough to have, we went to the ADRB last week and the Police Commission, and I know this can be a little confusing because we're doing two matters. We're doing a master plan amendment proposal and a specific site plan. So we're going to look at it, the big view of the master plan amendment, and show you how we've expanded this and what the new overall look for the site is, and then we will focus in on the site plan approval. So I'll start with the changes to the NDD. We now include the Stop and Shop parcel into the NDD with no proposed changes there. We also include abutting parcels to the south of the original property with the intent to relocate the recreational use and introduce a medical office use on the corner of Liberty Street and Volantown Road. And then changes to the original property, which you'll hear a little bit more about is really, it all comes out of the need to go in a different direction, get away from the theater building, which wasn't, didn't suit the proposed use of a recreational facility. And I think Jeremy will get into that in a little more detail. But it's the demolition of the theater, the construction of a 6,000-square-foot clubhouse facility for the apartment community, and then the construction of two additional 36-unit apartment buildings. So that's the basic change, which you can see up on the screen here. I'm not going to get into, we had the benefit of going through the NDD process, master plan process, the last time. Hopefully, it's fresh in everyone's memories. I'll summarize that when we're done, but I think the really interesting thing is getting into what's proposed for the site and to go on from there. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeremy to introduce you to the changes.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay? So as John alluded to, we've expanded and we feel enhanced and improved the Neighborhood Development District through some unplanned changes and then some opportunities that came our way. I'll start with sort of the initial impetus for the change. As we move forward with the approved NDD towards a site plan, structural engineering analysis and further programming conversations with the recreational user, the pickleball facility, kept kind of hitting roadblocks with that theater building in that the spacing of the columns weren't meeting their criteria for not only the regular courts but sort of enhanced championship courts, which obviously the goal with that facility is to make it a destination, you know, type amenity for the user and for the community. And it ultimately came down to, we had a 35,000-square-foot building where we were getting less courts than if we had built a purpose-built structure at about 25,000 square feet. We could really make it more efficient and be a much better building for the ultimate use. So we started looking at doing that, terminating the theater building, demolishing the theater building, and then replacing not only the pickleball uses but also the core amenities for the residential component, which are, these uses that are in this clubhouse and the adjacent pool are all the same programming components that we had internal to that theater structure originally. So that, the end result of that is a sort of what you would expect, clubhouse and amenity package for an apartment community of this style. And then simultaneously, Reedco was able to reach terms with the landowner to the south and, you know, agree to buy this entire parcel, which is actually four or five different parcels. So that afforded us the ability to expand the NDD, as we know the NDD can be expanded to adjacent properties, and really relocate these non-core residential uses to one section of the neighborhood, and then get these sort of residential-focused uses in their own area as well. We still envision this being a very pedestrian-friendly interaction and relationship between all of these uses, including the existing McDonald's and the Stop and Shop. So those are all included in the NDD. But this allows us to essentially provide more housing, which will obviously result in more affordable housing because we're still, you know, planning on applying for the Build for CT program. And then, again, simultaneously to provide a much better recreational/pickleball facility for the community, and in addition, provide a complement... recreational/pickleball facility for the community, and in addition, provide a complimentary, you know, 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot medical office use, which we really feel, in partnership with the Y here, will be a very strong and compelling destination for all of those uses. And these two groups, we envision being very symbiotic in how they work together with the community and their customers, so to speak. So that's the master plan. I'll just kind of walk through my slides. I'll keep it at a high level and let the engineers and architects answer the technical questions, but as John alluded to, we're incorporating the Stop and Shop as well as this additional parcel, so this defines the amended zone, the NDD. In pink here is our Phase One site plan application, so all of these buildings and uses were part of the original approved NDD. So this pink component is 124 apartments, plus, if you recall, there was about 10,000 square feet of ground floor commercial here, which we anticipate being the replacement to the Berkshire Bank that sits there today, plus, you know, another five or six thousand square feet, and then the clubhouse and leasing center now a separate structure. The differentiation here is just sort of the future site versus what's currently on Reedco. This before was the movie theater and a parking field. So all told, it's 232 apartments, 10,000 square feet of ground floor commercial, 25,000 to 30,000 square feet of commercial in the medical office, and then the recreational facility, pickleball facility is about 25,000 square feet. Again, I keep it sort of high level. We're exceeding the parking by about 27 spaces, and the NDD gives you a lot of flexibility on set packs, et cetera, but we've provided those in the documentation to sort of give you the numbers of where we stand.
How does the number of apartments compare to the previous master plan?
Previous master plan was 124 apartments, so now we're 232. It's three additional 36-unit buildings.
And do you say anywhere how many are gonna be affordable?
It's 20 percent, so 46 total versus the 25 before.
Are you gonna speak, you had an enlightened approach to affordable housing.
Yep.
Are you gonna speak to that later on?
I do.
I'm sorry to disrupt your presentation.
No, no, no problem at all. I got a slide. I'm not coming right up. I'll just touch on the economic impact, the highlight of the Gorman &amp; York report that was provided. They estimate approximately 22 new to district students and sort of calculate the government services here, offset by a $900,000 annual revenue increase in taxes, so positive fiscal impact on an annualized basis, you know, significant amount of one-time development fees and sewer connection fees, and then, you know, highlighting the jobs created, and then these obviously would be your consumer spending from the folks that would come and live within the community. So we feel all very positive. Renderings you've pretty much seen before, although I would note the theater building no longer lurking in the background of this one, and then here's our, you know, NDD-level concept for what we're envisioning at the corner of Volantown and Liberty, which is a two-story, you know, brick facility with the, you know, recreational facility kind of adjacent to and touching, sort of growing out of that, but also working with the grade here to kind of tuck down the height. This sits, the base of this rec facility is four or five feet below street level, so we think that does a nice job of kind of tucking that in with the community and not having it sort of dominate the skyline. The mix of studios all the way up through three bedrooms, we really want to cast a wide net for all different sorts of folks here in the community, and variety for us, I'll just say, from a kind of leasing and operation standpoint, is, variety is key. It helps us kind of keep the building full and always have something to offer for folks, so we feel great about that. Here's the affordability component. So we had committed before and obviously would intend to keep that commitment to apply for Build for CT, program's still viable, still being utilized. 20 percent of the apartments under that program are deemed affordable. The affordable, Chaffa, who runs Build for CT, sets those rent levels, but they're based on an 80 percent of area median income rent, and then they compare that to where our market rents are, and they're looking to see a healthy spread to make sure that the units we're offering as affordable are indeed affordable. Our average anticipated discounts today, based on where our market rents would be today and what Build for CT would underwrite today, you see about a savings of $300 a month on our studios, 600 a month on the ones, and the twos and threes are almost $1,000 off relative to market. So we feel that those are strong discounts to make these units attainable for folks. And just to refresh on the application process, we have to have site plan approval in hand before we can close our loan, and when we go for the loan, underwriting and closing, that's when Build for CT would formally engage us into the program. So we, you know, we move through the site plan, get the commitment, and then applying for that Build for CT happens simultaneous to sort of rolling out our financing. And then we are incentivized through the Build for CT through low-interest financing on those affordable units, so they've sort of tried to teed it up so that developers, more developers would take advantage of this. And the term of the affordability is a minimum of six years, but will continue for as long as those Build for CT loans are in place. And I think I mentioned last time that the average interest rate on those loans is 2 percent, and you can refinance your entire property without having to pay off that loan, so it further incentivizes the owner to keep those affordable units in place. The process is very accretive to the investment side of the deal, so it's not something I've ever seen anyone anticipate paying off soon to get out from under the affordable. They want to keep that low interest rate as long as they can. These are some conceptual renderings of the medical office and rec center. Sort of, this would be straight from, looking in straight from Volantown, so you've got the medical office building and then the roof line of the pickleball center behind, and there's a centralized sort of conjoined entrance point for both. This would be looking to the west. Oh, I'm sorry, looking to the north. That doesn't seem right. This is looking to the west. This is looking to, from the north, looking south, thank you, and then this guy is looking from Liberty Street, looking east. So again, it's a street, it's a flat elevation drawing. Really, the grade kind of makes its way up like so towards the apartments, but, you know, gives you a context of the scale. Floor plate for that, again, we're really efficient with courts here. We've got nine courts. I think at our last iteration of the movie theater building, we were down to six with maybe like a half court because of all the structural complications and a lot of dead space, so we really feel sort of proud of the work we've done here. There's an event room, restrooms, of course, and a small office pro shop, and then a little bit of a lounge area, and then, as you said, this shared entry point and gets you into the medical office. These renderings you've seen, these are really unchanged. We did go back through architectural design review last week and kind of reaffirmed that these are the concepts we're moving forward with for these buildings. This is the mixed-use, closest to McDonald's with the ground floor retail. Again, the 36-unit buildings have integral parking, so direct access garages, and then we also have detached garages, which is really a response to what the market for multifamily communities is seeking in Connecticut. So we think this is a very smart building layout where we capture some of our parking within the building footprint, serves the residents, but also helps us, you know, cut down a little bit on asphalt. Second and third floors are just apartments with a central corridor. And then for the mixed-use building, it's ground floor retail. You can see we've sort of identified where the bank and drive-through would sit, and this building is serviced by an elevator, so this will be sort of more accessible units for folks that need or want, that don't want to deal with stairs. Here's the clubhouse, kind of in keeping materials-wise with the other residential buildings, but this is our central hub of the community. We'll, and I'll just kind of jump here, we've got our leasing office and mail and package services, a fairly robust fitness center, although we also anticipate, you know, folks using the rec center, restrooms, central kind of great room that views out onto the pool and beyond, and then the cafe off to the side with some work-for-home, private workspaces. We have a sports golf simulator room, and then some other gaming kind of programming here, covered porch, and then off of the back of this, you've got a fire pit, outdoor seating, and then the pool beyond. That sort of works this way. That's it. Do you want to talk about engineering, or what do you want to move to?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on the uptake. So this outline in green right now was your original NDD property that we approved?
Maybe you go back to the...
Yeah, let me go.
Hang on, I want... I mean, I'm a little confused as to what's Phase One, what's the NDD previously, and what's the new NDD. I'm a little mixed up.
We've been living and breathing it.
I apologize for my confusion. But I understand this, but I'm just confused as to what buildings you're showing us tonight were or were not on the presentation we approved earlier. I realize that was a conceptual plan.
Understood. Let me show you one.
Great, thank you.
I think will help.
So I'm not alone in my confusion?
This is the existing site with the movie theater.
Okay.
Okay, and the Berkshire Bank and the McDonald's. This was all part of the NDD you originally approved.
Right, okay.
This land was not part of it, and then the Stop and Shop to the east was not part of it.
Where are you, I don't see where you're pointing.
Up at the top here is the Stop and Shop.
Okay. Okay.
Can you guys see, I don't know.
There we go. Much better. Thank you.
I don't know how to make the pointer bigger. Thank you very much. Okay, so then if I go here, that's this facility, yeah, McDonald's, the bank was here, and then the movie theater sort of sits all in here. Thank you.
I was doing it from back there.
Oh, thank you. Which one? Thank you. So the bank is here, McDonald's here, and Stop and Shop just off-page here. This parking is all Stop and Shop parking. So what we've done is the movie theater, which used to sit here, has, it gets demolished, and the apartment-related uses in that original plan are here, and then these buildings are all new. So our Phase One site plan is essentially... Our Phase One site plan is the four buildings that were already approved as part of the NDD, plus the uses, apartment-specific uses from that movie theater building. So then our future, what we're looking for from an amendment to the NDD, are these additional three residential buildings. There's two on the blue and one here, and then the relocation here of the rec facility and the addition of the medical office.
Great, thank you. So this site plan you're referring to right now...
The pink.
Is for all, oh, just the pink, not including the other three residential buildings?
Not at this time.
Correct. Site plan.
Site plan.
The site plan we're up for is for, we had to get the NDD first, so the site plan we're requesting is just for buildings that you guys have already approved the NDD on.
Okay, thank you.
And then the future stuff is our, the furtherance of the expanding of the NDD.
Which is the, a master plan revision.
Just as we, we're sort of like overlapping it now. Like when we came here before, we were just doing the master plan. Now things have changed, so we have to redo the master plan, expand it into these new spaces, expand it into Stop and Shop with the hope, you know, that we can expand it further north in the future, but for site plan, but you have to get a site plan approval to build, you know, to, so the site plan is just for the part in pink.
So that's for, just again, bear with me, I'm sorry. Green and blue is your revision to the master plan with the expansion, and your pink is simply tonight's site plan approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for asking, because it's hard for us to even talk through without skipping over some of the important points.
Is your presentation going to deal with the, what infrastructure is a part of Phase One?
Yes, so we wanted to, we didn't want to do two complete presentations, because we'd have to do the whole NDD, master plan, then we'd have to start over again, so that's why, yeah, yeah.
I just want to know when that part is coming.
Well, now, I think what we'd like to do is turn it over to, yeah, Jeff Fitzgerald to do the engineering. If you recall, when we were here for the NDD, we, you were curious, and he asked for a little more information about stormwater.
Right.
And we're, because we're also asking, the site plan is also a groundwater development permit, protection permit as well, so that's part of our site plan as well, and we were able to sort of preview what we planned to do, and now we're here, as we said we would be, with a site plan which shows all those structures, so.
Jeff's got his own slides.
Yeah, so I think it's a good time to turn it over to Jeff.
In that, in Jeff's portion of the presentation, if we're going to be asked, and I think we are, to amend the zone to expand the area of the NDD zone, you know, I'm hoping he's gonna talk about those same items of concern on the expanded area. Excellent.
Yes.
Indeed, he will.
Evening, Jeff.
Yes, we learned, we learned our lesson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Clifton. Thanks very much for having us here tonight. Yeah, I'm gonna talk a bit about how this expansion of the NDD lays out first and the aspects of that, and then I'll get into the details of the site plan application for Phase One.
Good way to go.
And the utilities and all that. So I think Jeremy did a good job of laying out how we ended up with the, with the pickleball facility being here in lieu of the area where the theater was. That made sense, so we'll talk a bit about that, this development here. As he said, it's a two-story medical office building plus the purpose-built pickleball facility and outdoor courts on the corner. Access is from this point here, single point of access opposite Hickey Drive, which is the road that comes down to behind Dunkin' Donuts. And all the utilities really that will serve this will come off of Route Two for this, for the southwestern portion, and then the residential building here, just like the rest of these, will be served off of the center water and sewer line that run through here, which I will talk about a bit later when we get into the site plan. The way this, this parcel works, it's a little bit lower in topography than over here, so there's no direct-drive connection from here or there. We will probably have pedestrian routes that get us down here, and you'll certainly have the Liberty Street sidewalk as a pedestrian route that continues as it does right now along our frontage, and it'll wrap around and run all the way up around the entire development. The stormwater aspect of this project here is gonna be predicated on testing to assume that we have soils that appropriate for recharge, but either way, we're gonna do a significant surface pond for water quality to get the required water quality treatment volume per the new DEP stormwater manual. And then we'll likely go from that with a high-level overflow to go back to underground detention and some recharge post-treatment that may have overflows to this area if necessary. But presently, this site seems to perk very well from what we can witness when you go out there. Before we actually do the design of the system, we'll do infiltration tests to determine what those rates are. If they're like what we've seen up in this area, it'll be, it'll be excellent for that post-treatment to be able to recharge that water. As I was saying about the grade, this, this site is a little bit higher, and then this is a little bit higher than over here. So these, this building, these will basically step down a little bit as we come down and kind of transition. This building is intended to face front along Volantown Road. This building was designed to face front on the main drive that becomes Pocketuck Farmers Road that goes all the way through here, so the front, front faces here, parking in back. And then we really designed this as, you know, a center spine village road with the front of this building here and the front of the clubhouse building here, and then the terminus of... And then the terminus of this view being the front of this building here. Important to note that the mixed-use building where the Berkshire Bank hopefully will be relocated, we accommodated drive-through here, is intended to be a two-sided building, so it's... there's no back to it. Retail front with awnings, Jeremy showed you on that, an attractive retail front. And then, again, the backside being attractive residential entrance.
Jeff, my recollection was that the previous site plan had incorporated in the Phase One area, the first area where we changed its zone to NDD, you had incorporated some bio remediation swales.
Absolutely, I'll get into that. I'm going to finish talking about the stormwater features here. In the same vein as what we just talked about, what you just mentioned here, which are the bio swales in this area, this area, this area, and over here, we're proposing similar treatment where we'll be able to have stormwater run off into these bio swales on this side, this side, and along this entire edge with high-level overflows that get into the wet pond. And then, like I said, the final outlet, I don't want an outlet to Route Two, to Route 149 of Volantown Road, because state highway, and it doesn't go there now. Everything that hits that water now, hits that site now, pretty much, from what I can tell from our study out there, it recharges at present. So we're going to do the same thing, detain it with underground under hair after treating it and let it recharge. And that'll... the size of that system will ultimately be decided based on the perk rates we see when we do our geological testing. So if... That basically sums up my presentation on the NDD expansion. If anyone has any questions on that aspect, which, as Jeremy said, is really everything includes this building, this building, and this building, and then this whole development here. That's all the expansion.
I guess my only concern about the plan or the concept is that you haven't done percolation tests yet.
Yeah, which I don't...
I think it's reasonable to assume that it will be similar.
Correct.
My recollection of the previous, of the area to the north, is that it's excessive percolation, and that's what we're worried about there.
Correct. And the design was made to actually attenuate some of that infiltration. Now, the difference in... from master plan, I think you, with good reason, you requested more design than typical for a master plan when we were doing this, because I had proposed to reuse that system that was, you know, a very high-quality system with VorTeqNas hydrodynamic separators, as well as this, you know, basically governored recharge system in order to take advantage of the soils and still get high-quality stormwater treatment. So we did do the retrofits for bio swales to bring a little more LID into that development. Now this, this is greenfield, this is new. It's... we have... we're not retrofitting anything here. So we have the ability to test and do a design that meets... When we come in here for a site plan, it meets your goals for a, you know, top-notch water quality and stormwater attenuation system. That'll be able to... I'm expecting it to handle all the peak flows and volumes, because we're going to want to keep it on this site.
Is there any way, if, let's just assume for a minute that we get an unexpected result in the percolation test, is there any way to design a detention system with a high-level overflow to the north?
It's a little bit... it's a little bit removed from it. What you probably would have, there is some water here that comes in. Basically, the state uses the shoulder of this road, I think, for, you know, for conveyance to move water down this way. And then they do have water going into Route Volantown Road and heading point south. So we would... I think we'd certainly have the right through our DOT permit, we're going to be an OSTA major traffic generator modification since we already have a certificate.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you can't get percolation and some loss through percolation in peak flows, can you get enough detention so that you can attenuate the peak and allow a reduced flow somewhere off-site?
Absolutely. I think between the surface basin and the swales, and then the size of this parking lot. And when I show you, you know, the size of the system that super-effectively handles the 700-plus parking spaces that currently are in this area, you'll see that it should be not a difficult time. And then we'll add, again, some rain gardens and things for the clean roof areas. I think we'll have not a problem handling that.
That answers my question.
All right. So with that, I'll go on to the Phase One site plan. So let's go to my existing plan. So as Jeremy said, this is the existing plaza, the vacant movie theater here. We've got the Berkshire Bank here and an empty out parcel here. Stop &amp; Shop is to the northeast, and this is the existing McDonald's. This is the site for the Phase Two expansion. But we're not talking about that now, just Phase One. Important to note that not including the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot nor the McDonald's parking lot, this area here includes 744 parking spaces. So when we talk about reduction in flows, when I get into what I'm proposing, it's much less parking, we've got certainly building roofs, but it's vertical. These are multi-story buildings. So we're able to really reduce the flows by changing that. We're proposing, within the development limits, 309 spaces. Let's go to the next sheet now. Yeah. So this is basically our utility plan. But in these parking lots, and I'll show you here, 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 and here in Phase One, there's... that's just 309 spaces. So from a utility design standpoint, as I had mentioned, we're maintaining the existing utilities that presently serve McDonald's and the water and sewer that presently serve Stop &amp; Shop through here. And we're pulling our electrical to transformer to be located here, and then distributing that, that's the yellow, some additional transformers over here. That's the yellow is the electrical service, transformers to serve the existing, to the proposed buildings. Water is this blue line here. And there's an existing water main coming off of Liberty here. And so we're... It presently runs up and in towards the Stop &amp; Shop. We're routing it in this fashion around and back up to Stop &amp; Shop while serving the existing buildings along the way. Sanitary sewer right here does a similar exercise. It doesn't show very well on this screen, but basically, we're routing it again around these buildings. It'll serve those buildings. We've designed a system which we've submitted, and that's... that handles our flows as well as the existing flows coming from the Stop &amp; Shop. Water, like I said, presently, for the existing uses here, comes from Liberty, and we're pulling those off of that as well. Next slide. So the existing stormwater system that we're using, that we're reusing, is shown here in red in this location and this location. So that's where a big part of this design is kind of taking advantage of it. Yep, of that system that handles the existing HOITS and all this parking in front. And then this system handles, the Berkshire Bank was designed to handle the pad that was never built here, as well as the existing McDonald's here. So the... Again, we reduce flows in the pre-versus-post in all the design storms. And there's essentially three design points that are impacted by Phase One. Phase One A and One B are this and this, and they discharge to the pond over here via overland flow. But there's... the outlets are here and here. Those are in beautiful shape. There's no evidence of erosion at their outlets. Indicates to me that they rarely see use because of the effectiveness of the system that remains in place. And then, Design Point Two is basically the eastern side of this edge where there's existing parking, some parking spaces for the HOITS, and that's it. And there's no really outlet to that. And that just drains overland to the east... I'm sorry, to the south, to the lot that we're buying ultimately. We are actually, by virtue of this plan here, it reduces the impervious area that goes there, so we do nothing and achieve a reduction in flows to that area. And then Design Point Three, which is the back of the half of... Back half of the HOITS lot, and then the whole eastern HOITS lot discharges to a system here that goes off and actually infiltrates underneath the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. That's in Phase One is, remains intact, it's not being touched. It's part of Phase Two overall NDD. That will be redesigned and reconfigured to maintain the drainage pattern and maintain the... Have water quality, like I showed you on that plan, to handle all the flows from that area, which will be split between residential building here and residential and parking lots over here. So in summary, for all three of the design points for Phase One A, we, in the two 10, 25, and 100-year design storms, we see a reduction in flows into the system and out of the system based on the proposed design that we have here.
What's the impervious area in the original plan that we... The concept plan that we saw, or the master plan that we saw with the zone change? What is the impervious area at that time versus this revision?
Let's see if I have that here. We reduce the impervious area by a little over half an acre, .53 acres, within the limit of this work area here. So it's a half acre more.
Half acre more of pervious or impervious?
Half acre... In the existing condition, it's a half acre more of impervious. So we reduce it.
So you're increasing the impervious area?
We're increasing the pervious surface that infiltrates.
Pervious, okay. How about from the original master plan?
With the... I haven't done a comparison of that. With the HOITS, the original master plan showing the old HOITS cinema, the old cinema building. Yeah, I haven't compared that. But it should be fairly consistent. It should be... this should be actually better, because the clubhouse area, remember, that was all HOITS roof pretty much that came over here, and we've incorporated this green area here. Yeah, yeah. There was the HOITS cinema, and then there was, as Jeremy just mentioned, there was a hardscape for the pool on this southwest end of the cinema. So it's a significant reduction.
It'd be interesting to know that, you know, what that number is.
We could definitely figure it out. We can't figure it out tonight, because I don't think we've done that calculus between the plan, the master plan showing the HOITS, and...
The direction we're moving in is to decrease the amount of impervious area.
Yeah, and we're definitely effectively doing that.
I know the town planner had some suggestions on how that could be done, but it would be changes to the layout. I guess we're going to hear more about that later. What might be of interest is if you can put the two plans side by side on the screen. Is that possible? The original master plan and this site plan?
The old plan? The approved plan from last time.
Can anyone see that?
Yeah. So what we had, that's a significant amount of park, because we maintained that parking lot that's presently there for the HOITS in this area to use for pickleball events. So...
I mean, just judging from that, it looks pretty close.
It's a pretty significant reduction.
Thank you. Certainly not markedly different. Thank you.
No, I think we're good. Want to have Ethan go next? I'm going to have our traffic engineer, Ethan Chakovsky, come up.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. Ethan Chakovsky, thank you. Professional engineer with the State of Connecticut, also a professional traffic operations engineer, national certification. Can we pull up the site plan? Yeah, perfect. So a bit of this presentation is going to be a little bit of a refresher from our previous presentation, and then I'll get into the expanded area and our full traffic study that was submitted for the application. So this was covered already a little bit, but just a refresher for the board, the access points to the proposed site, they're via the existing signalized intersection on Liberty Street, the existing stock control on Volantown Road, and then there's also an existing right-in along the northbound Liberty Street. So the only new access proposed is the... For the expanded site area to the south with the new pickleball court and medical office. And Jeff alluded to this, but it aligns up with Hickey Road, which is, you know, once, when you have an adjacent roadway, you do want to line up to make sure you reduce the amount of conflict points on the roadway. I'd also just point out that in existing conditions, there's about eight different full-movement driveways along this Pawtucket Road interconnection between the McDonald's and the Stop &amp; Shop. So we're significantly consolidating that to just the two access points here and here, which just does a lot to reduce the amount of conflict points along the roadway. And I think it makes a lot of sense for our site plan here. So the site was previously certified by the Office of State Traffic Administration, also known as OSTA, it's a division of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. So when it was certified, it was certified for the HOITS cinema and, of course, the other uses on the site. We looked at industry-standard Institute of Transportation Engineers data when we look at traffic generation. We compare the existing certifiable area and what we're proposing now. You'll find when you compare the two uses that the movie theater generates more traffic during the weeknight peak hours, the evening hours, and then, of course, the weekend hours. And that traffic is, it's more directed, you know, concentrated. It all comes at once and leaves at once, you know, sort of aligned with the movie times, which makes sense. That's the majority of traffic. So during those evening and weekend peak hours, you see more traffic. With the residential use, you see a little bit less, but, I mean, a little bit more due to the residential. So even though we have less traffic in the evening and weekend hours, we still look at all the existing traffic patterns on the adjacent roadways. We originally did traffic counts in late 2023, and when we expanded into the south, we did some follow-up traffic counts in April of this year. traffic counts in April of this year. So, taking a look at the, at the peak hours, which is generally when you study traffic, you know, you, you look at the peak hour of traffic, we look at the morning peak hour, and evening peak hour, and Saturday peak hour. We found that with the residential development and the, and the recreational to the south, that all the existing intersections would continue to operate at an acceptable level of service. The, the signalized intersections would continue to operate at a level of service B or better during the, the build conditions, and then the stop control of the intersection movements would, would operate at level of service C or better. We also took a look at queuing to ensure that the existing turn lanes can accommodate any change in traffic patterns, and, and we found that, that each of the, the turn lanes can continue to accommodate the proposed traffic conditions. We also specifically looked, if you bring that, yep, at the, that the new proposed access and, and left turn lanes into the site there. When we look at a 95th percentile queue for that left turn movement, it actually, in the build condition, comes out to less than one vehicle. And, and what that essentially means is we, we don't expect about one vehicle to be queuing at that left turn in at a time, at, at most. So, you know, we, we find that acceptable, and it'd be, you know, more than acceptable delay for the movements at that intersection, that new intersection. So, we also took a look at the site parking. It was mentioned that we're, we're parking compliant, which is true, but we also evaluate parking data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, looking at both the residential site and the recreational site with the medical office. We found that both sites can more than accommodate any anticipated parking demand, which, which is in line with the, with the parking requirements from the town. So, we, we submitted traffic studies for both the Phase One and the master site plan. We will need to go to OSTA for an update of that previous certificate I mentioned with the movie theater. So, they'll review all of our traffic studies and, and recommend any improvements. Our, we concluded in our traffic analysis that the existing intersection, specifically the two signalized intersections along the site frontage, can, can handle the, the change in traffic patterns, you know, without any deficiencies, but, you know, they're going to review our study as well and, and may make recommendations or may agree with us.
Have you had any conversations with OSTA about any of this?
I haven't spoken to OSTA about this application. We, we just asked for traffic signal timings to ensure we're using the most current timings on our traffic study. And then, you know, once we, we have this, you know, they require that you submit the planning and zoning before you go through with an application.
I know what they were.
So, so, we'll, we'll be moving forward with that as the next step.
Did you have any conversations with them about the previous master plan?
Uh, no, we, not with OSTA. So, but in conclusion, I mean, in my professional opinion, there's no significant impact to traffic on the adjacent intersections, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, thank you for your report. I did briefly look through your rather voluminous report, and I'm confused a little bit by the, the English language. It's so technical with counts and this and that, but your ultimate conclusion, it says not significantly impact traffic. What would be a significant impact?
So, so there are, there is...
I mean, you're, you're using all these numbers, and all of a sudden you just slice it off with a, not significant.
Yeah. So, so the criteria is based on the Highway Capacity Manual. That's published by the Federal Highway Administration, and that's, it's an industry-wide standard that's accepted by most municipalities, including Connecticut Department of Transportation. So, they have different thresholds based on the average delay per vehicle at, at each of the intersections and each of the movements, and then they assign a level of service to each of those. And then there's, you know, we found that the intersections would operate at level of service B or better, which is within acceptable ranges.
Do they have a column, significant impact?
If you go to our appendix of our report, we, we describe each of the level of services and, and, and how they're defined in the Highway Capacity Manual. Basically, once you reach like a level of service, there is any, once you reach an E or an F, then, then it's considered to be, you know, unacceptable levels of delay. We didn't find that.
How close are you to any, what, what levels? I didn't get that far in your report, to be quite honest.
Uh, we have, so, some movements, there was level of service C.
Okay.
On the stock control intersections.
Great. Thank you very much.
How about queuing? Do you have any graphics that show queuing before and after?
Uh, we didn't provide any graphics within this report, but I can certainly provide that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You know, but we did find, we did find that the 95th percentile queues, which is, you know, the worst-case queuing situation during a peak hour, that they can be accommodated within the, the lanes that are currently provided.
Did you look at volume to capacity ratio on Liberty Street?
We did, yes. As part of the, as, as part of the capacity analysis, we look at delays and queuing, and we also look at volume.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Or the traffic engineer?
Yeah, just a quick question. You mentioned with the, the Y, it being, you know, pickleball, but also being sort of a championship, you know, court creating sort of a tournaments and things like that. What's the, what's the parking impact of a normal Y with a normal courts versus a tournament? How would that, what are the difference numbers? And if you did have overflow, where would the overflow be? Because you're sort of an isolated area there.
Can we pull up the site plan again? So, when we look at parking calculations, we look at, it's a max demand on average for, for a variety of land uses. This, in this case, we use a community center. So, we found that, you know, on average, the max parking here is more than accommodated on-site. In fact, there's a reserve capacity of, total, we found a total average parking demand of 139, where 177 stalls are provided, so there is reserve capacity on this site. But should it need to overflow, you know, there is going to be walkability between the two sites and, and the Stop and Shop shop, shopping center. I'm not sure if there's been, they've developed that far of a parking or event plan at this point, but, you know, there's more than adequate parking on-site based on the demand, the average demand for the residential and the, the Y.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, because the average, average demand would be one thing, but if you had a tournament, then that's obviously going to be peak or higher peak demand with, with things than just, you know, that it is, I guess, separated from the residential. Obviously, you don't want to come home from work, and then there's people coming parking in your, in your spot because they're there for a pickleball tournament. So...
I, I mean, there's reserve capacity beyond what, what the average demand would be. And when I say average, it's, it's an average of many study sites across the country, and then they, they take the maximum that's recorded on all of those traffic studies. So, I say average maximum demand, it's a little tongue-twister-y, but basically, the, the average of the, all the study sites, the max demand recorded at each one of those sites.
If, if I could just jump in, Ethan, Jeff Fitzgerald.
Just use the microphone if you would, Jeff.
Yep. In the instance that there was a tournament that was going to see serious parking demand more than what we have, there would have to be arrangements with the town, with tenants like Stop and Shop, but then we'd have to make some arrangements in advance to, to figure out how much parking we would need, and if we could temporarily use some of that parking in, within their lease area. But I think that's typically how it would be handled, and maybe staff could park behind Stop and Shop. There's, there's, there's a fair amount of room, but it's, it's something that's not contemplated, nor should it be provided in the parking lot area for everyday use in, in a place like this that has a lot of different spaces.
And I also would just add that we're, we're not that far down the road with the Y or any other operator, but certainly the lease with, with a group like that would say, these are the spaces we have, and we would require them to comply with all local traffic laws and municipal, you know, requirements where they'd have tournaments like that. And if that involved in finding offsite parking and arranging for shuttles and things of that nature, you know, we would have those discussions and make sure that's all articulated in our agreement with them. But certainly wouldn't put anything on our residents or, or any other, you know, surrounding neighbors, because we want to hold tournaments like that.
Any further questions? Counselor?
I think we'll turn to architecture now.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Orazio Chifalelli. I'm with Allies Architecture. We're out of Moorestown, New Jersey. I am a licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. I believe I've talked here back in February. Okay. Our task was to create a new, attractive, quality community and destination for its residents and guests. Our design intent was to create a project that was more in line with the architectural styles of Stonington. We find this in elements found in the residential and commercial neighborhoods. We were asked to design a residential building, three stories. We also have a mixed-use building, which I believe we've talked about the last demos here. But now we have a clubhouse. It's a one-story structure. This building, along with a pool cabana, there's our, these are our residential mixed-use buildings. They're, that's okay. They're, those are flat roofs with a pitched roof running around the perimeter to conceal anything that'd be up on that flat roof, as well as concealing the flat roof. We take, to basically break down the scale of these buildings, we manipulate the facade. We provide bumps and jogs, creating shadow lines to help break down the length of the building. We manipulate the materials. We'll run them up and down the facade. If you can, if you can flip to an end there, you'll see how we carry the brick up and down. We provide band boards, all to reduce the perceived height of the building.
Is this a peaked roof, or is it just a facade?
So, what we have is a flat roof behind those mansard-type roofs.
Got it.
It's a three-dimensional roof shingle on the sloped roof and to give the impression of the sloped roof. It also helps us keep our, by keeping our height down on our building as well. We have accents of, I don't know if, I'll just see if I can find the right button here. We have some accents at the building entrances here and at the stair towers, where we'll use some standing seam roof. We'll use, we used a cedar shake-style vinyl siding on the upper portions. We'll use some horizontal siding as well, and then we use a brick, and we're looking in the red family, similar to something more found in Stonington. Okay. We've talked about these buildings. We, we have a residential building that's 36 units. The mixed-use building has 30, 16 apartment dwellings and the retail 10,000 square feet on the, on the first floor. Here's our clubhouse. So, this one, I don't believe you have seen, and I'm trying to. There we go. So, this building is a sloped roof. There is no flat roof. Again, we're going to use the same palette and same materials. We have three-dimensional roof shingles. We're still providing some dormers, gables. We're also bringing in some brick, some horizontal siding, and perhaps we may throw some cedar, cedar shake-style siding, vinyl siding. Unfortunately, this scan, the roofs got a little bright, but we have some standing seam roofs, not unlike the residential. We're trying to make this thing a unified community, try to keep all of our colors and materials similar. We do play with the brick. We run it around the entire base of the building. It is a one-story structure. It's about 5,700 square feet currently. It houses, as, as Jeremy said before, it has a community room, it has a cafe, it has mail, a mail room, it has a leasing office, a nice sizable fitness area. There's a cafe. We have a few stay-at-home workstations, a little golf simulator, a little gaming room, and yes, it has access on both sides of the building, here and here, but more importantly, we also have access to that beautiful patio and pool in the back. Along with this, we've done a pool cabana. The pool cabana is a one-story structure, wood-framed. That'll house men's and women's locker room with showers. It'll have pool storage, and then it also has, more importantly, it'll have the lifeguard office. Okay? That building, from mean of roof to slab, is all of 15 feet in, in, in height. What else? Phase One has our 36-unit buildings. Phase Two has the exact same buildings. There are six similar 36-unit buildings and one mixed-use. The mixed-use is in Phase One. There's three here that are Phase One, and the only thing now is that there was a clubhouse and a cabana. There are independent garage structures. There are eight bay parking, bays. They're private, and I believe we have three in Phase One, and we're just carrying off and doing three for Phase, Phase Two. I believe, I think I've covered all the buildings. Do you have any questions or...
Questions of the architect from the commission? Ben?
Yes, thank you. So, what goes on on the fourth floor? That's where your mechanicals are, or is it?
So, there are three-story structures with a fat, flat roof.
Yeah.
And we may have some condensers up on the roof, the residential and the, and the mixed-use.
So, is the flat roof at the peak of your slope?
No, sir. No, sir.
It's flat with a mansard.
It's a mansard-type roof.
That's what I thought.
So, we're concealing about four or five feet.
And would you have sprinkler system in there? I don't know.
Yes, yes, sir. We have an NFPA 13R system for the residential, NFPA 13 in the commercial.
So, it's dead.
They're in the retail.
It's dead space, that little triangle. It's unused space, that triangle.
In those mansards?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's all draft stopped per code. It'll be an NFPA 13 system for the residential. So, in, in a, in per code, we're not really required to sprinkler those mansards, but we have to draft stop them.
Right, okay.
Okay, so that's every two units.
Great, thank you. Thanks, that's all.
Is there elevator service to the fourth floor?
Uh, no. So, the only one with the...
How do you get, how do you get the mechanical units out of there once they're...
Yes. So, we, we bring one of our stairwells. So, in both buildings, the residential and the mixed-use building, what we have is a building that has two stair towers and a connecting corridor. When we get to the third floor, one of those stair towers continues up to, to the rooftop. So, this way, it's a lot easier to manipulate, to get your condensers if anything should happen, general maintenance, any of that stuff. So, we do bring a stairwell up.
So, you are sprinkling three floors then?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yep.
Do you have a letter from Westerly Water that, that they have adequate water pressure and volume to do that?
That's all in the process right now. I believe we're trying to get a hydrogen, high hydrant flow test. I believe Robert was looking.
Currently, still awaiting comment from Westerly Water.
Okay.
So, how, how do you get the, in that flat roof?
Yes, sir.
Where are the drought, downspouts? Interior?
So, around the perimeter, we'll have downspouts, or gutters, and they'll come down, but in the, in, on the flat portion, obviously, what we have are roof drains with an emergency overflow as well. So, there is another line that comes down and then continues horizontally and out.
But it's the downspout interior for the flat roof? But it's the downsput interior for the flat roof?
To the roof drains? Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That'll work well.
Well, you have, you have your roof and then you have your additional overflow.
Well, I was just concerned, not that we've had much snow in the past year or two, but we could get snow again someday, and I was just curious.
Yes.
How that flat roof was going to handle the melting and the?
The freezing and falling, yeah.
So there's no tanks or either subsurface or surface that are required by Westley Water to sprinkler the, all these buildings? All floors?
No, at this point, I think we would need to see what the hydrant, hydrant flow test is, but I, I believe that we were supposed to have some sufficient water pressure.
Okay.
But we're, we're moving forward.
Anything on the surface that changes the plan, you're going to have to come back here for.
I'm sorry?
Anything different on the surface that you might have to implement as a part of that would have to come back for an additional approval.
Correct, something like a, a pump, emergency pump?
Well, if their pump house is required, it would be a change to the plan.
Then that would be a change to the, yeah. I don't believe we're going to be needing it, but.
If everything is subsurface, I would leave it up to the staff if it had to come back to us if it's in a vault. But if it's on the surface and it, it changes coverage and, and changes any appearance outwardly of the site, it would have to come back.
Understood.
Anything else?
Any questions of the architect? No one else? Anybody else said?
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ross.
Counselor?
Yeah, again, for the record, John Casey, I'll just note that in the first NDD application, there were comments, I know we're waiting for comments from Westley Water this go-around, but last go-around. They, they said, well, I'll just read them all for purposes of completeness. There's no available water on Volantown Road, which we know. The shopping center has private water main within its development. This main is tapped on Liberty Street. There is available water on Liberty Street. If a developer is requesting future water service, I will need a set of detailed plans and the fire flow demand. So that's, that was their comments. I assume they'd be the same, and I think that's what Roz was alluding to.
What just concerns me is the, is the level of the buildings, and, and that increases, you know, the requirements for, for fire suppression.
Understood, yeah. But it's not, it's been done before. Three-story buildings, so. So our next, so it. I just wanted to stand up. So that's the end of our expert presentation, and as, as we mentioned when we started, this was two applications, the NDD amendment as well as the site, phase-one site plan. So the NDD process, as I alluded to earlier, is something that I hope is, is fresh in your, your memory. It's now in section 10.34 of your regulations. Clifton refers to it in his notes or in his report. I don't want to belabor the point. I think we've shown in the first go-around that this is an appropriate place for a, for an NDB, NDD. It's already been approved. Expanding it, I think, is also appropriate under the circumstances. It'll be a mixed-use residential and commercial development with the ability to expand into the future. As I, as we alluded to, you know, the expansion actually happened even faster than we expected with the properties to the south. It would have been nice to keep things simple, but you got to, you had a great opportunity and we wanted to, to, to go forward with it. So in terms of the NDD expansion, as I said, it's, the property is eligible for NDD. It's in the HI-60 zone, which is allowed. It's greater than 150,000 square feet. It's connected to public sewer and water. As with the last, the original master plan submission, we believe we submitted sufficient information to allow you to make a decision on this application. And as we have with phase one, we will be back with phase two. We know it gets a little convoluted because there's only so much information we can provide. The phase one was somewhat unique because we had a built-out site, and as Jeff alluded to, we had existing stormwater structures that were going to be reused, so we had lots of information and we could provide a lot of details. But as Jeff responded to your questions, Mr. Chairman, you know, we feel the stormwater can be properly handled at the phase-two sites to the south. Just going on as we look through section 10.3, the requirement for a master plan, as you found before, we believe the, the expansion of the NDD conforms to section 10.3.1 and the plan of conservation development, which I'll touch on shortly. You've heard from our professional experts, which is part of your application process, to have professionally-prepared materials. Under section 10.3, sorry, 15.7, there's a master plan requirements. All those requirements were provided, preliminary traffic impact report, information on public utilities, a narrative report about proposed uses, existing uses, impact statements, which I'll touch on in a moment. We provided a sign plan. We really didn't get into the sign plan too much, but those materials are in your packets. Preliminary, for the NDD expansion, we provided the preliminary building elevations and, and other narrative reports. So we believe we submitted all the required materials that you need to approve the, the NDD expansion. Sorry, trying not to read you your entire regulations. Touching briefly on the impact reports that were required for this application. First is a municipal fiscal impact statement. Jeremy went through that, the GOMEN in York. He explained the net positive benefit fiscal impact to the town and the somewhat negligible impact on the schools. That's all contained in the report. We've had reports on public safety and traffic, public works. There's a requirement about cultural, aesthetic, and heritage. As we said before, the original NDD, you approved it. That was the movie theater. Everything was built in the late 90s and early 2010s, the movie theater, the bank. Those are now proposed to be demolished and replaced, as we've explained. Also, there's an abandoned building on 3 Volantown Road that we propose to abandon, obviously demolish. We checked with the Connecticut Cultural Resource Information System, which is maintained by the State Historic Preservation Office. That house is not listed as a historic structure. We feel it's been abandoned and neglected and that it's not a significant historic structure that requires to be saved in any, in any way. So we would say there's no historic structures of significance on either the original NDD site or the expanded site. As regards to natural resources, we're not proposing anything within the wetland or the upland review area, as with the first go-around. And then you heard from Jeff about all the engineering on the site plan documents. So with that, I don't know, I'll just sort of put this, do you want to go through your comments? Do you want us to just respond to them as they're written in, in the report? Or would you, how would you want to handle that? And what's the chairman's pleasure?
I think the planner has some comments, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
We would hear from the planner first.
And I think that's appropriate, yeah.
And, and then unless you have further presentation, we would move to the audience for those in favor and those opposed, after which time you'll have.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably a good, a, a good way to go. I agree.
Thank you, Counselor. And the members of your team. Clifton? You had some fairly extensive comments that were built into the report. I thank you for those. If you'd like to comment on those now, that would be great.
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll do that. I'll keep it partially brief and also mention there are two separate sets of comments, one for the zone change, which is a little more in-depth, and then the one for the site plan is a little more simplified. What I will say is, in both applications, we've routed this out to all the relevant agencies listed. We're still waiting for comments from a lot of them. That does make it a little difficult moving forward with potential approvals, but in the case of the site plan, the stipulations that are there should be sufficient enough to address any outstanding comments, but just, that's for your awareness. But the, both applications went before the ADRB at its regular meeting last week on June 10th, and they approved the application with one stipulation. There was, they wanted a revised landscaping plan along Liberty Street to include additional plantings for visual screening going particularly northbound on Liberty Street. That's been incorporated and carried over into approval for both applications, so the commission, or if the commission would choose. That hasn't been provided in time for this presentation tonight, but it is something that the applicants noted. A couple of the comments I had on the zone change application, I want to preface and say they are more in terms of planning best practice rather than stipulations that I believe the commission could impose upon the applicant. Particularly getting into the purpose, the connections, the orientations of buildings. So really comments one through five in particular in the zone change are really kind of at that, that higher theoretical level. But what I did provide in common five were two alternatives of building facility layout for what would be considered phase two. And I'll just clarify my purpose, one for the commission, but two, just for the record, is the application describes this core, this core concept of having a centralized spine that's going kind of northeasterly to southeasterly, which it just looks, you know, up-down on your site, on the proposed site plans. In the, in the proposed layouts for the phase-two element, though, the buildings, and particularly Building G, which is the one that currently faces Volantown, is kind of separated and segregated from that central corridor, whereas every other building aligns on it. So in, in theory, what you would normally want to do is have everything centralized on your spine and not the adjacent roads. So that's what I proposed with alternative A and, you know, reinforcing the concept of the spine and recognizing that it's a residential development. You need a large core green space, and instead the green spaces have, were dispersed via like park, pocket parks. But if you're proposing a high residential turnout and particularly with the number of school-aged children that could be on site, which was 43 total estimated, having a core central green space would be a benefit to any residential neighborhood. So that's why I proposed those two alternatives, is to focus on what that would, element would be. I don't necessarily believe the applicant needs to do that. I think when they would come back for the phase-two design, it would be more focused on those pocket parks as being a point of focus, recognizing that there's going to be a significant residential population that's either going to have kids, have dogs, wanting to do some form of outdoor recreation in an area of town that currently is absent of recreation until the pickleball facility is constructed. So that's kind of comments one through five. Comment six goes into the parking, and comment seven also goes into the park, into the parking. The core issue here was, and Bennett briefly brought it up, but it, from a different perspective, is the mix of uses that are proposed between residential, medical, the couple mixed-use spaces, including the bank, and then you have the two, two stay-current McDonald's and Stop &amp; Shop. All of those typically operate at, you know, nine to five plus or minus set of hours when the core residential population is going to be at home at night. So I stated that there should be some incorporation of shared parking schemes into this, which currently isn't present. They meet the, they meet the requirements for the zoning regulations as written, but, you know, as we've seen with some other applications recently, applicants have come in and came in with shared parking schemes. This seems like the perfect opportunity, from my perspective, to do something like that, which would further reduce the overall impervious area. I think there might be lease agreements that were mentioned related to the Stop &amp; Shop site that makes that relationship not happen at this time. I don't think they have to, you know, address that. Potentially same with the McDonald's use. I don't think the applicant needs to address that. I'm just stating from a planning perspective. And then on, going on to comments eight and nine and maybe even 10, these are more focused on the traffic study element, and I understand that the traffic counts in the traffic report says that there's not going to be a large impact to the site. Just looking at the current turning, turning movements, both into the recreational site across from Hickey Drive and then particularly the one further up on Pocket Tuck Farms where there's currently the Stop &amp; Shop. There's two opportunity, or there are two moments when the lane becomes a single lane and you're making either a left or right turn into the site. What's going to happen is what we see everywhere else in town where you have those sig, single left-right cases where the car behind you is not going to queue in the way that you would normally count in a parking, or in the traffic count. They're going to veer off and go around into the shoulder. In some cases, in case of the, in case of the Hickey Drive intersection, you have enough space there to do so. But if you do that coming southbound on 49, you're running directly into oncoming traffic if you're going to veer around that right-turning vehicle. So although the traffic report says everything's going to work out, I just, I question, and OSTA would eventually be the one to come up with this, I question if those are really going to be safe intersections in the long run. And those are to be addressed by OSTA and DOT, but I just wanted to point it out. And then, and those were really kind of the core comments I had on the zone change. On the site plan application, I identified we need a, we need a full roofing plan. We need a construction phasing plan and an erosion control phasing plan because the site is so large, so those should be provided. And then the applicant should address the landscaping plan requirement from ADRB. That's the totality of my comments.
Do any of these recommendations translate into conditions of any sort?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think particularly the ones that would be difficult to incorporate from the applicant's perspective would be the reorientation of structures, which they can definitely do and come back for in terms of a update to the zoning, the master plan.
And I could see.
But it also can be readressed during the Phase Two design, too.
I could see where the stormwater management plan might be a condition. You know, we had one for the first application, and, and we really don't even have the framework for this one.
In the first application, in the previous master plan application, they provided a narrative because they were, the proposal was to utilize the existing systems and then provide updated design details at the site plan stage, which is now. Since the Phase Two component is, as Jeff stated, brand-new site development, I think the narrative would suffice instead of a larger plan, because that will be addressed during the site plan application. It is, it was just something worth pointing out, that, that narrative was not.
We've got some time on this application, should we?
Not as specific.
Should we ask for the stormwater management plan and the landscaping plan now, as additional submittals that should come in before our next meeting?
Yeah, if we kept the public hearing open, yes.
And continue the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Would that, would that be your recommendation?
That, that's what I recommended specifically for the zone change application. I didn't, I did recommend it for the site plan as well.
Right.
But the stipulations that are in there, if the commission chose to approve that tonight, you could, but I added stipulations to.
Okay, so it is on the zone change, or it is on the site plan?
It's on both applications.
I'm just looking at the zone change right now. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I neglected, we actually have our, I mentioned him, we have our landscape architect here to, and I, we had so many people speaking, I lost track. But especially regarding the ADRB comments, I think that would be appropriate since it's something that Clifton pointed out in his comments as well.
My question would simply be if we should get it now, before the next meeting, or we should get it as a condition of approval?
That's, yeah, that's my, my suggestion was to continue, particularly because we haven't received the town engineer's comments, and I think those are the most pressing.
Do we have town engineer's comments here yet?
Not yet.
I, I didn't think so. I think we'd want to hold over for that, anyway, but anyone else have any other questions? Of Clifton?
Not of Clifton, but I would like to put into the record about our aquifer protection that we did mention in the previous acceptance of the NDD.
Agreed.
That we really wanted to hammer that home, that this is in that same proximity to that aquifer.
Agreed. We can't forget this is in an aquifer protection zone.
That's what I'm trying to say, thank you.
And, you know, the, the, therefore, the stormwater management part of it is very important, and to, and to act without a stormwater management plan in any part of an aquifer protection zone. So I'm almost wondering if that should come in so that the town engineer can take a look at it, so that we have the assurance, you know, when, when we finally consider this, that, so, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, that we may want to request that, as well as the landscaping plan, prior to the next meeting, so the town engineer can take a look at it before we act on it, not just a condition of approval. Because I, I, I think that that's part of what you want to consider in arriving at a conclusion on this application.
And we can hear from the landscape architect tonight, if he's made the trip here, we might as well listen to him.
Right.
Or her, whatever.
So before we move to public comment, does anybody else have any questions of Clifton? Or the council? Or his team?
I have questions for your team, bud.
Go right ahead.
I have just a couple of questions. I know you haven't submitted it, but the last time you had said you were getting feedback from the agency for the affordable housing, have you gotten more feedback on that? As far as the low-cost loans for the 20% affordable housing?
The only, to the extent that I'm in, you know, relatively regular communication with the person that runs that program, and they're aware that we've expanded the scope of this development, which they're enthusiastic about, and the program is still, you know, in place and active, and he sort of has us on his radar for once we get the approvals to slide us into the, our application will go in and they'll slide us into the program. So nothing has really changed. The only thing that changed is that their rents do update, sort of year-over-year, based on what the AMI is for the area, and it happens across the state. So, the numbers I presented today are based on the updated figures from, from them.
You know, I saw on the news, it said that Stop &amp; Shop was going to close 20 stores. I'm not sure if that was New England, Connecticut. Have you checked with them as far as that store specifically, if it was targeted for closure?
This is a extremely well-performing store in their portfolio.
Is it?
This is a banner store. There, there's no intent to close this store.
My other question is, like, it's a before and after. I know you had said, nothing's been finalized on the pickleball, the YMCA.
Sure.
But I think part of the reason we approved the first part was because there was pickleball for the, the town of Stonington, not just the residents, the town.
Yep.
And I just think, if it's going up percentage-wise housing, are we going up the same percentage-wise in those things for the town? Is the pickleball or anything Y-related or public-related?
Sure, I guess, I guess my perspective on that would be that we're adding, you know, 30,000 square feet of medical office, in addition to the, the new pickleball center, and the pickleball center that we're building is probably 25% better in terms of what it's offering than what we were able to achieve within the movie theater footprint.
So that's 25% more. I don't, I mean, they'll, the medical buildings for the town, but obviously you're making money on that, too. I don't really see it's the same thing, but, so it's, the pickleball is 25% going up, and the housing is almost 50% going up, correct?
Yeah, but I, I don't think our intent was to try to keep those ratios the same. We're, we're sort of right-sizing the pickleball facility to what the user is looking for. And I think we believe, to be honest with you, I think we believe the demand for housing far exceeds what we're going to build here.
Yeah, I'd say that the 20% affordable is great, too, I'm, but.
Thank you.
Don't want to lose, you know, all right. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up to speak either for or against, or neutral on this application, but I will ask if anyone wishes to speak. Carleen? Good evening to you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Stonington, and I'm very concerned about what kind of development comes into our town and how it affects our town. I am basing my comments on their presentation tonight. I did not have time to read the planner's report, so I'm not fully aware. You know I usually come here very well-prepared, but other things have taken up my time. But I do have a lot of comments and questions that I hope Mr. Casey will respond to when he comes back up. One of the questions is, they kept referring to the word "the developer," and I'm wondering, were they referring to Mr. Leach, or is he planning to sell this plan to somebody else? I'm a little bit confused again, because I haven't done all my homework, but I understand that the McDonald's is staying, it looks like the Stop &amp; Shop is staying, but what about the medical part of Stop &amp; Shop? Is that going to be demolished, because you're putting a new medical building in there? That question has not been asked. And that, that concerns me, if they're going to be moving into that, because in this area, we're, we're got two kinds of medical people. We've got the Lawrence and Memorial Yale-New Haven Association, and we have the Hartford I'm, I'm glad Mr. Brissette brought up the parking facilities for the, for pickleball, because that was my thought. When you have a tournament, do you have enough parking places for this? And another part of my question would be about the pickleball. When that goes out of vogue, and that's no longer the thing to do, what's going to happen to that building? Another question is, what happens if you don't get your financing? And you don't, we don't get the 20%? Are we, are you going to build it anyway? Now, it looked like you also own property, which I think would be on the west side of that entrance coming in from Liberty Street. It looks like, is that where you're referring to as the Phase Two? I, I'm a little bit confused about, is that some, some future plan that's going to come down the road with more buildings and more housing? Could you give us a little bit of enlightenment about that? And again, I don't know what Phase Two means. Do you really understand what this Phase Two is all about? I'm very concerned about the aquifer protection. We heard nothing from them tonight about that. I, I really feel this plan is not ready to be approved. It, it seems incomplete to me. Too many things are missing. So, and I like some of the things that the planner is, is suggesting. I hope they go home and come back with maybe another plan that incorporates some of those things, especially open space for the residents that are going to live there. That, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Counselor, do you wish rebuttal time?
Sorry, yes, Mr. Chairman, but I think we'll ask our landscape architect to come up here first. I apologize.
My name is Wayne Violet, landscape architect, Boulder. I may hit on a couple of those questions, but I really wanted to really address the Architectural Review Board comments relating to the landscape plan. We had a great meeting with the Architectural Review Board last week. We reviewed the landscape plan. We have general approval for the landscape plan that was presented for Phase One. There was one stipulation as identified as part of our discussions and meetings that are in the proceedings last week. That area was the landscaping along the frontage for Route Two. I don't know if we have the ability to pull up the plan, but if we do, we'll take a look at it. There was a particular area along Route Two frontage where we had one of the proposed residential buildings as part of Phase One with its parking facing Route Two. It was a section of the frontage that was a couple hundred linear feet. Good dialogue back and forth. We had presented our full plan with all the species and all the great features that we have as part of the landscape plan, and we all kind of agreed that we wanted to add some additional plantings and additional visual screening for that area. That plan is in development, and we have no issues with submitting that, you know, whenever the time needs to happen. But the point I wanted to make is, we had a good conversation with the Architectural Review Board in favor with our plans and our goals. We've talked about it a bit tonight, of we're utilizing as much green space as the current plan allows for within the green space program throughout the site. We have pedestrian circulation, robust plantings, we have hundreds and hundreds of plants that are being proposed as far as the landscape plan. We feel very good about the areas that we're trying to enhance. And again, that, that comment, which we have no issues responding to with a revised landscape plan, was a section along Route Two frontage where we all agreed that we're going to provide some additional visual screening for that area. So that's what I was going to respond to. I know there's some other questions rightfully brought up by the public, and, yeah, we'll respond to those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
Just sorry, to, to Wayne's point, we, we have done a plan that was stipulated.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. We, we did a plan, plan with Wayne in real time to enhance the area that the ADRB was asking for, which is just beyond the pickleball. There's a, a potential vista of some of the garage doors, and I apologize if I can't get it to launch here, but we're essentially enhancing screen right in this zone. Wayne added about 12 or 15 mix of deciduous and evergreen plantings in this area to, to block this off, and then enhance some plantings along this area as well. So, I, I'm making the point that we had talked in, in the ADRB meeting of, of having a specific plan stated that could be stipulated into the approval for Phase One if, if he so chose to do that.
Thank you.
So, I just want to make sure we, so, and I, I want to make sure we understand we have our plan going forward. So I guess you haven't voted yet as to where we're going, but it sounds like it's the commission's pleasure to continue the public hearing on the NDD master plan, based on Clifton's comments. And if we have that time, we can provide some additional materials to respond to his comments, and it'd probably be more efficient to do it that way than try to shoot from the hip this evening on those comments.
So I'm looking at the calendar that we have on, I think it's the zoning amendment. And, let me just get through here. Sorry, I was in a different part of the agenda here. Clifton, if I'm not mistaken, a decision without extension must be made by 9/26/24, and this is on the, I believe the zone, zoning map amendment, is it, is it the same?
The public hearings for both projects need to be closed by July 23rd.
Okay, for both, for both applications?
For both, the public hearings, correct.
Okay, so, so we have to have any additional materials as well in advance of that?
Correct. We do have a, need, we do have our regular meeting in July. We do not have a special meeting because of the Fourth of July holiday. So our regular meeting, the third Tuesday of July, is still within the timeframe for the applicant to provide answers to comments and questions and updated plans. The potential conflict is that by statute, the site plan application needs to be decided at a, by a different date than the zone change, yet the zone change needs to be decided either at the same time or before the site plan is approved. So, weird, weird tracks and trajectories going on. It would be in the best interest of the applicant to have everything revised by the July meeting, and in which case, if there's a need for an extension, both projects be extended, the public hearing potentially for both projects be extended.
And I guess our point, our thought, Mr. Chairman, was, so the site plan is for buildings, you know, that primarily, almost exclusively have been approved, you know, by the commission, by ADRB. There's the one change that Wayne just referred to regarding the screening along, along Liberty Street. And I think that, and I also would like to make the point that, we didn't get into it a lot here, but we did file, and Jeff's here, we could go into it in more detail, but we did file for a groundwater protection permit. It's a completely different application, it's very technical. Jeff, you know, obviously went through all the stormwater management that's proposed for Phase One, which in the application materials, go through the, the standards and the requirements for a GPP. So, we feel we have met those, those requirements. If, I don't know if Jeff, you have anything additional to add on, on the GPP itself? I mean, we don't need to short-shift anything, but it's also a long application and a long night, so we don't want to, you know, over, you know, overdo anything, but maybe if you can just speak.
To that point, yeah, we, we met all the requirements of the groundwater.
To that point, yeah, we, we met all the requirements of the groundwater protection permit. That, those plans, though, are, are still in review by the engineer. I would love to be able to get the site plan approved with stipulations if possible and, you know, the, we can show you the landscaping plan. I have it, I'm, we have it here electronically that addresses that. I don't know if that's possible. At, you know, there's nothing much more to add. We understand that, that the groundwater protection just requires the implementation of LID, LID stormwater techniques. As I mentioned before, we submitted a complete schematic layout of stormwater plans and I could present that a bit for, for, for the Phase Two, which I, I outlined there that incorporated the wet pond, the underground detention and then, but it's not a requirement, certainly of the master plan, to submit detailed stormwater management plans. And I don't want to, in order to have the master plan approval, I don't want to have to do a full design of stormwater management, which we did the first time and we understood that, you know, because I, that was a, a different type of project because we were asking you to approve a master plan that incorporated a whole lot of, you know, existing stuff that, that was a, a little unique. In this case, this is a, the Phase Two is a new plan. So, I, I really don't think to get master plan approval for Phase Two, we should have to submit a fully engineered stormwater plan. I have complete confidence that we can do a fully engineered stormwater plan for the site, given, given the time and the, and the dollars to do the design.
And I, I don't think we're asking you to, to do a whole stormwater design. I, I think what we're asking you for is a singular stormwater management plan for the new area, the, the area that you're expanded and kind of consistent with what we did the last time and kind of consistent with what we do with everybody that's in an aquifer protection zone. So, I don't know that we would be consistent with what we did the last time with the first master plan or consistent with what we've done to all the applications that we've looked at in aquifer protection zones if we didn't get some details on stormwater management. And, and frankly, not knowing the percolation rate in such a sensitive area, at the very least, we would want to know that. At the very least, I think, we would want to see, at the same conceptual level, what you were proposing in the new expanded zone. Frankly, to make sure it's going to work without having to pass into any other areas and, and discharge into any, any other areas that might be impacted by this. So, so, a master plan is just that. It isn't a design. It's a plan, but it requires certain information so that, so that the plan is credible. One would be a percolation rate.
So, we can, we, we've used assumed perk rates based on the, the assumed geology that we have there based on, you know, mapping, but it's not, in order to do actual coefficient of permeability tests, we have to go out there with a backhoe and dig and bring water there and, and have, have geologists and geotechnical engineers do some, do some testing. And it's, it's a lot of money and if you're going to do that, you might as well do the testing for the, you know, the, the blow counts, the parking lot design and for the building design, if you're going to be efficient about it. So, we'd like to not do that as part of the-
I think a representative test would be fine, you know, to, but I, I don't like the word assumption, you know.
But I guess I would say-
Maybe that, maybe that, some of that should have been done in advance.
But I'd say, Mr. Chairman, this commission will have the full ability to look, when we come back with the site plan, we'll need to do the whole stormwater management plan and the general, and the GPP at that time, so-
Except, Counselor, if, if some of the water has to pass through the developed area, it then becomes, becomes something that we should have known to begin with.
But if we can't do it, yeah, if we, if, if we have the master plan and it turns out we can't do it in, you know, engineering wise, then we're going to have to come back for a new master plan.
Right.
That's, that's what I would say this-
See, that's what I'm saying. I'd rather know that now.
Right. Well, but some things aren't knowable-
Maybe you don't have enough information for us to approve the master plan. You be careful what you're saying to us.
No, no, but, but I, no, because I think we, we did, following your regulations, we gave you the materials that your regulations require for the master plan. It's, it's, you know, it's general narratives, it's general information. It's like, this is what we think we could put on this site. I think if, if Jeff and the rest of the team didn't think we could do what we showed you, we, we wouldn't do it. And also, if we couldn't do it, you know, from just a financial point of view, it, it's like, you know, there's a lot of things that are built into any land use proposal, right, that maybe a commission doesn't get involved in. And, you know, and those are just things that maybe are beyond sort of planning and beyond zoning. The way this is laid out, right, you, you do have a much bigger, higher level view of the zone because we're asking you to re-map this land to allow us to do something. And so, you know, we've already shown you that this is an appropriate place for an NDD. Now, we're asking to expand it. We had the benefit that it was already developed and we could get into more detail with the stormwater in the first go around, but this time, I, we can make, we can provide general information, but there's going to be a certain limit. And it, and like I said, if we draw that on the plan and we want to, and we, we think we can do it and for some reason, we go out there with a backhoe and it just doesn't work, then we, we, we can't meet your regulations for stormwater, we can't meet the regulations for the GPP and something's going to have to, you know, change.
And that's always the, the goal of a master plan, is to be able to understand if, if the use, if the idea is appropriate for this zone, for you enough to change the zone, if, assuming, and we present a strategy, how are we, how are we serving it with water? How are we serving it with sand, with sewer? How are we handling the stormwater? And I presented the stormwater strategy and we presented narrative. That should be adequate for a master plan approval and it's on us to make sure that we can satisfy the site plan requirements and the, and submit the detailed engineer, engineering for review that meets site plan requirements and the groundwater protection criteria. So, that's, that's why I feel like-
Jeff, I don't agree with you any more than I did when we looked at the first master plan. I'm sorry. I, I just, I respect you. You're a very good engineer and, and I hear what you're saying. But, but if all of a sudden, we encounter high groundwater in these test holes and you're counting on these subsurface basins to hold water and they're full of groundwater, the whole system's not going to work. And, and to me, to me, the master planning, the master planning should tell us at least what the soil profile looks like. And I don't think we're asking a lot when we ask you to do something like that. Simple test holes that show us the soil profile, then your engineering judgment can suffice for the rest. You know, we're not asking for a full design. A soil profile would do. And I, I don't think we're asking for the sun, the moon and the stars and asking for that. That's what we're asking for in the stormwater management plan, is a soil profile to further bolster your assumptions that this could be handled with a pond, rain gardens, bioswales and various detention structures that you're proposing in the ground. That's, that's what we're asking for.
So, I had one more.
Yes.
On your site plan-
Okay.
For Phase One.
Yes.
I didn't see any kind of night scape illumination-
No, that's correct. I was going to ask that question, too.
Did I miss it? I know, I'm not prepared as I usually am.
Illumination you're talking about, site illumination.
Yeah, I'm a little frazzled this week. I didn't do my proper homework, similar. But I didn't see any kind of night scape or night-
Yeah, no, no, uh-
Lumens.
Illumination plan that has lighting levels at the perimeter and an assurance that they're dark sky compliant.
All, all lighting for the site, this is a residential development, not commercial, so it'll be a reduction in lighting levels from what we're out there presently. All light, lighting proposed will be dark sky compliant. A, a photometric plan can be, can be presented next time.
We would want a photometric plan.
That was the word I was searching for, a photometric.
Photometric.
And are there, I didn't see any streetlights? Are there any, like, street, you know, individual-
There's existing lighting for the access at McDonald's and along the roads. We would only be retrofitting the, where the parking lot area, the hood-
Show us that. Show us the photometric plan with an assurance that they're dark sky compliant.
And you would want that for the site plan to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're not voting on the site plan this evening because we don't have the engineers-
Correct.
Correct. So, yes.
Correct. We do need the town engineer's comments as well. That's, I mean, we've got to work with the town engineer to get that, but the sooner you can get this other information to us, the better. So, it would be the landscape plan that I guess is done.
It is.
The stormwater management plan that frames the concept with the soil profiles, the photometric plan with an assurance that the fixtures are dark sky compliant.
Okay.
I'm fairly certain that the town engineer is well into his review of these plans and will be able to get us something by the next meeting. Although he's up to his eyeballs continuously and-
So, so just so I can confirm, so for the site plan, it's a lighting plan, photometric, you know, slash photometrics plan. The landscape plan, and, and I would say, response to any comments, but there's really not a lot of comments on the, yet on the site plan that are of concern.
The two items I added, and they're going to cross over, a roof plan and the construction phasing plan and/or erosion sedimentation control phasing plan for the site as it's demolished and rebuilt.
Got it.
So, that's, that's what I added.
Do you guys have a set of plans, the submission in front of you, after the landscape plan, there should be a lighting plan with photometrics on it and in the set?
Photometric.
Yeah, it was submitted as part of our package.
With an assurance that, that the fixtures are dark sky compliant.
Yes.
In the plan already?
I guess the only other thing that I would mention is something from Wesley Water that, you know, assures us that, that the fire flow test is, is indicative of the fact that there's sufficient pressure and volume for fire suppression to three-story structure.
We have a will serve letter for the, the amount of water we intend to use and will, we're in the process of, process of requesting hydrant flow test for pressures in, in flow rate at, pressures at certain flow rates. Three-story buildings, if necessary, if absolutely, if there's terrible pressures out there, they can put a pump inside, pump inside the basement in the first floor.
Pumps and structures afterwards, and that can be a condition.
Totally understand.
Excuse me, Chair, there is a luminary plan in our package. I, like I say, I apologize for not being on my game tonight. So, yes, there's a lighting plan, L201.
Where is the lighting plan?
Lighting notes and details, L201.
Is there a photometric plan there?
That's what I, yes.
Okay.
So, I missed it. So, my apologies.
Likewise.
So, scratch that one off.
So, I guess we're okay with that.
But I guess while we're in this discussion phase, I would propose we hold off on voting on both NDD and site plan.
Correct. I, I agree that we should continue the public hearing and that gives the public an opportunity also to hear the, see the new information come in and comment if they have to. So, unless you have something additional, Counselor, or there's something else in the audience that we need to hear, we can continue this public hearing until the next meeting.
I just want to be sure on the NDD, what additional materials you're looking for? Did you have to take that?
I'm sorry. You can ask another question?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Did you, did you take?
I was asking what additional-
Yeah. I think for the NDD, it's the same elements with the landscaping plan and then the stormwater narrative, strategy, plan, testing.
Right.
That's what I captured. And then, I did believe there was additional public comment?
I think Carlene had something.
Yeah, I think there's additional pub, public comment.
Okay.
So, is the appropriate motion in order then?
Well, I just wanted, I just, I want to respond to Carlene's comments while we're here. So, she asked about Mike Leach and the developer and, I don't, there's, yeah, there's no plan. I was going to say, he, he was very clear, this, it, not that comment, but the comment about the town and his interest in the town and how this project will look and, and how it will be cared for. And I'll, I'll just summarize that Mike is a Stonington resident, lives here, is very, you know, committed to the town. He's taking care of that property for all the years it was built, takes care of the Stonington property, takes care of all his properties and is, I think he said, last time we were here, looking to develop a sort of, all I can think of is crown jewel, but a, a, a project that people will be proud of and will emulate and will flock to and hopefully help, you know, really spur development, appropriate development in that area of the town, you know, sort of languished, right? Supposed to be a developed area at the intersection, at the, the highway exchange. And so, he's, he's putting sort of all his cards on the table here and wants this project to succeed. So, the developer is not seeking to sell. In, regarding the stop and shop parcel, we said in the application that there is no proposed changes to that parcel. We're asking that it be incorporated in the NDD, but we're making and proposing no changes to that parcel. So, the stop and shop medical facility will, I'm not sure what that is, but that will stay the same. I think Ethan and Jeff responded to the, the comments about parking and, and Jeremy as well. You know, this, this isn't being designed for, as a sort of tournament facility. That, that might be a one-off event. It's capable of doing that, but just proper property management, you're, you're not going to let your tenant just, say, invite 10,000 people to their site when they have 177 parking spaces, you know? They're going to have to manage their site. If they're going to exceed parking, they're going to have to make, you know, alternate arrangements. They're going to have to get a parking lot somewhere else and bus people in or something if they really want that many people. Also, if you look on the floor plan, although it's somewhat basic right now, that building is mostly pickleball courts. It's meant to play pickleball. It's not an arena. There's really not a lot of space for people to, to stand around and watch games. So, let's see. I, I don't know what will happen after pickleball. We can only plan for what's now, but we can say that this, this facility as proposed now, unlike repurposing the theater, which was sort of kind of putting a round peg in a square hole, or maybe, I think Mike said lipstick on a pig, you know, this is going to be a state-of-the-art recreational facility and it will have the ability, you won't have columns in between things. So, if pickleball goes out of fashion, it'll be, and people want to play tennis again, there'll be room, right, to put tennis courts. There'll be room to put little, in, inside soccer fields or something like that. So, it's a multi-purpose building that can be reconfigured into any number of, of uses in the future. You know, you could have more wellness space, more workout space, a basketball court, volleyball courts, you have sand volleyball in Stony Groton that's very popular. So, I think it provides actually a lot of flexibility. What's the, and I think we explained Phase Two is just how we're, what we call the different site plans going forward. The NDD master plan covers the entire area that's proposed for the NDD and then the site plans are Phase One, Phase Two, so we can pull it apart like we've done, show you that specific thing, then go on to the next one in the future. I think we prefer, we'd love to do a site plan that covers everything, but the reality of things is you've got to do it in parts and we really want to get this going. We want to get the applications in to Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. We want to get those in because we can't get our financing, we can't get shovels in the ground, we can't get people interested in the project, you know, we can't get contractors, anything until we get this approval. So, I know sometimes we sort of run up against each other, but that's really what, you know, what it's all about. You know, when, when this meeting closes, and we sort of alluded to this in our presentation, we live with this, Jeremy and Michael even more so than anyone. This is what they do every day. There's all little parts of it, as I, and as I alluded to earlier, that, you know, commissions don't have to worry about, but this is a project that is in constant development. And when you see, you know, these, these signposts, you know, mile markers and you really want to get to it, you really want to get- and you really want to get to it, you really want to get that site plan, and I, I think you appreciate that, because I've been before this commission a lot, but that's, you know, when you hear, you know, developers push back, that's why, because you've got so many good ideas and so much you want to accomplish, and you can't do it. So, that's, that's really the, the push. Everything else in terms of financing, as I said, Michael's committed to this project, we are confident that, you know, as much as we can reasonably be, that we'll get the financing for the affordable housing, and I'll digress for a minute. I, I was speaking to another land use professional, and I said I was doing a multifamily project here, and they almost made like a little joke, like, oh, I hope it's not affordable, you know, because no town wants that, you know, that's what he was suggesting. I said, actually, no, it was the commission that asked us, and we already had an answer, because Jeremy was already working on that. So, I think that part of this is, is sort of, has fit, and worked out really well, and our plan is to keep pushing at it. So, we will work diligently. My understanding is we got to get everything in by July 1st, so it's two weeks ahead of the 16th meeting?
No, because the public hearing's open.
Open, oh, so you just need it in a reasonable time?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, that's good. We'll still shoot to get it in, everything in as soon as possible, and we will get to the information, and we look forward to being back in front of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it, and I, and I think we've shown you in the past that we ask for certain things, you produce certain things, and, and, you know, we give it a fair review and try to work with you, so-
Yes, no, I, no, fully appreciate it, we're just-
There is anybody up here that has an agenda, that's trying to, you know, throw landmines in the way of, of progress of a developer, quite to the contrary, I think this group tries to work with everybody and fairly review things that come before them.
Yes, and we're not, and I'm not-
And I know, I know that you do your best on your end also, so-
Thank you.
Let's, let's continue to work in good faith and, and see if we can get what we need to, to make the decision.
Yes, and that's obviously any, you know, anyone who stands here, what they're trying to do is get you the information you need to make a decision.
We appreciate your perspective, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Carly?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to make one comment, if I may. I wanted to comment about the medical building, which I believe was flat-roofed and brick. And to me, that just cheapens the whole project, it doesn't fit. Maybe they could work on a better design of that building. His buildings, even though I don't like three-story buildings, they're fairly good-looking, but that just does not fit into this whole plan, just in my opinion. Just wanted to let them know, maybe they can tweak that, too, while they're doing everything else.
Thank you, Carly. Anyone else? Counselor, do you wish any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We, we appreciate that, that that building will go through a series of reviews, since it's, it's really just, at this point, you know, it's a master plan, it's more like where we want it on the ground, ADRB feels like it'll have another chance to look at that building in the future, when we come back.
Maybe you can take the, the comments into consideration when, when it comes back before ADRB.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. What's the commission's pleasure around this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the public hearing, both for the site plan application and also for the zoning map amendment.
Motion to continue both public hearings for Item B and Item C under public hearings on our agenda, made by Ryan, thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
Second to motion.
Seconded by Ben, thank you, Ben. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I also make a motion now to close the, this commission meeting, close this hearing.
Thank you, there's no second required, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the meeting is closed, thank you.